To the Westmont Village Board Meeting of June 22, 2017 at 6:00 PM. And ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I forgot the rest of you, I'm sorry.
I pledge it.
Pledge it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome. I know Jenny's going to say it's a beautiful night, get outside, but we've got a healthy agenda tonight, so we'll start with open forum. I do have two requests. Is there anybody else besides the two requests I have? If you have an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to see chief. If not, then we'll go with the two open forum requests I have. The first one's from Joan Gagan, the President of Indian Trail Town Homes Association, and it's a response regarding storm sewer flooding at Prairie and White Birch.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Joan Gagan, President of the Indian Trail Town Home Association, and with me tonight are several interested homeowners, yay team. Indian Trail is 180 townhomes at 39th and Cass. Built in the early 1980s by Town and Country Builders, and it was built essentially on a marsh. The subdivision was designed with this in mind. No basements, retention basins, and detention basins everywhere. The village approved the design and accepted streets and sewers. As you are aware, there was a serious street flooding problem on White Birch Lane during heavy rainfall. Public work staff has been involved since last year and suspects a blockage in a stormwater sewer behind homes on Prairie Drive. Now, after much back and forth, on May 24, I received a letter from Mike Ramsey demanding the association repair or remove the obstruction by July 31. On May 25, our attorney responded, again stating our position, that we have no obligation to do this. We're not legal owners. It isn't our responsibility. We believe firmly that it is the village's responsibility. And our attorney requested the village to provide support for its demand. He also filed a Freedom of Information Act. There was a response received on that, but to date, there has been no response to his letter. And so we're left. The blockage still exists, the intersection will still flood, and we don't know where we stand. I do think very clearly that because of the flooding situation and the way our subdivision was designed, it's a very odd place to have a storm sewer. It's right outside the people, under their decks, but that's street level. And the storm sewers from White Birch flow into it, and Prairie Drive flow into it. Just four feet from the easement, there's a drop of almost five feet. It's a huge detention basin, and that's where all the other public easements are. I submit that it's because engineering design, little physics, that's why it was done the way it was done. Again, it was the early 80s. Things were done the way they were done. So I do ask, what is the status of this matter, and will we get a response to our attorney letter?
And again, this is the first. I think the board is aware of it, and go ahead. I'll turn to our attorney.
Yeah, staff and I have reviewed this matter, and I was directed to issue a responsive letter to your attorney, which has been started but not completed, and I'll try and get it out tomorrow or Monday at the latest.
Okay.
But I have all the information I need been brought up to date, and there will be a response with a solution or two for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. My second request.
Before you get the second request.
Were you mayor?
Can you?
During that time?
After you make the response, can you either let us see it or synopsize it so we know what's going on?
Absolutely. Yeah. Thanks, Jim. My second request. Dan Hogan, 128 South Cass Avenue, and he's here. This Tuesday at 10:25 AM, a non-emergency personnel of the Westmont Fire Department entered my residence unlawfully. He used the key from the Knox box to gain entry. The village employ entering my residence illegally and was allowed to violation of my family's civil liberties. That says a lot, but Dan, you're up.
Just a mayor of village trustees. On Tuesday at approximately 10:25, a non-emergency personnel. Now, let me just make it plain is we're not talking about the first responders, we're not talking about the firemen, we're not talking about police officers. You know, we have respect for them. If anything happens, they should go in. I'm talking about administrative staff that came over, and one of my tenants called and said that there's a problem with our box, the monitoring, what's new because it's being changed constantly. I says, "I'll be right there." And she told him, "He's on his way." And he says, "Well, I don't have time for this. I have to, I'll have to reschedule an appointment with him." She looked out the window, he's at the Knox box taking the key. She goes, "What are you doing?" He says, "Well, I'm going in." She said, "He said he's on his way. Don't go in because that's in his residence, because the box is in my daughter's playroom." He elected to just go in and have no disregard to our privacy. I want to know, and then I respond, well, I actually is, I didn't know that he went in, so I called his office. I says, "I'm waiting for you. Where are you at?" And he says, "I already went in." I says, "You were told not to go in. That's my personal residence. It's not a common area like the other buildings." And he says, "I know it's your residence, but I'm busy." Now, I called the police. It does put the police officer in a predicament, but I want to address the board. Who has keys? We're not talking about first responders. And then I find out that there was problems with the radio box with Caltron, and it's been multiple reportings throughout the village because it changed over recently to ACDC Company, and there's eight villages going to this company. But we were, what according to the records, we were having problems with our box. Now, our box is normal. He's seen it was normal. But according to the report, there was problems with the radio box at 6:00 AM, 9:00 AM, 12:30 PM. Now, I still have not received a call, or anybody from the radio company. But in the past, I would always have somebody call me. "Hey, there's a problem with your box. Could you check it out?" That's why when I was talking to my tenant, I says, "Who is it?" You know, it's somebody, I says, "Is it, you know, who is it?" And I didn't recognize the name. There are certain people in the fire department that do the monitoring, or, you know, the, I don't even know what they call them, but I know them, Presnahan, you know, stuff, guys like that, where I could have talked to him and just, you know, he knew this, you know, the layout. But I am still flabbergasted that who has the right to walk into your residence? Now, all the new buildings, the homes, have to have sprinklers. And there's a knock box. Does that mean that the fire department, non-emergency people could just walk into that house? What if my daughter, that's my daughter's playroom. He walks in, he didn't even knock. She lets out a scream, my wife hears it upstairs, and she's screaming, "There's a man. If there's a firearm in the house, who's liable?" If I set the alarm, the alarm goes off, I get a call, somebody's breaking into your house. Nobody calls. In the past, they always call. I've had Tri-State call me two, two months ago. "There's problems with your panel." I'm looking at it now, there's nothing. So I would like the board to address this issue before I have to go further, because I feel that the response that I'm getting from the fire department is we have every right to go investigate. We're not talking about the entry for emergencies. This is non-emergency. You're not getting a feedback from a wireless system that was just changed over. It's in a residence. It's not in a common area. I mean, does this mean that the fire department could start coming into everybody's houses for non-emergency?
Again, I don't think we're going to be able to answer that. I think what we'll, we have to do is have our fire department chief sitting there, not only get the information about what occurred at your residence from our staff, you know, there's always a story here or there.
Right.
And see how that matches up with the answer, a couple of your questions, who can go in, as well as why you haven't been receiving reports. So I don't know if there's any.
I'm wondering who has the key to that knock box besides your first responders, the people that should have the key? Administrative people, that gets lost, this village is up for grabs.
Well, no, we'll find that. Now, Chief, come on up. If you can answer a couple, now would be the time, yes.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm aware of the situation. I apologize for any inconvenience to you or your family, but I'm investigating this right now to find out more about it. In reference to the Knox box keys, the Knox box keys are there because we have an ordinance that is a requirement.
It's a great.
And all the, and all the, all the fire department people, including fire inspectors, have them because they need them to do their jobs when they do the annual inspections on the alarm panels. Part of doing the inspections on the businesses and alarm panels is making sure the keys and key box work. Fifty percent of the time, people change the locks in their businesses, don't notify us. That's why they do that, so that's why inspectors have those. In reference to your comment about sprinkler requirements in residential, there is no requirement that the residential homes that are getting sprinkled will have to have key boxes.
Not yet.
That won't happen, I can tell you that. Okay. So, the other thing is, is that a little bit of information that I've got so far from, you know, talking to Larry Kaufman, our Director of the Bureau, is that when we put the alarm into your, your business apartment building, at the time, you were kind of at the end where we were trying to get everybody done in compliance. And part of approving the plans is the panels originally should have been in the business part of that building. But my understanding is, is that to help you with the cost of this, that was agreed upon that they would be in the residential area.
No. Ours was one of the first to be put in years. It was put in seven years before the deadline, so that is not true.
Okay. So, and what I have to do is I have to do an internal investigation. I'm in the process of doing that now, and, you know, I, I would appreciate it if you, when you had this, you would have called me, you know, because I heard from my inspector.
I was told by the police officer that you said that he has every right.
So, when he came to the, to the fire department, I wasn't there. He talked to my deputy chief, he talked to my fire inspector.
I heard it was chief.
Yeah. So, anyway, when any business owner, landlord, or anything else have any issues with anything with the fire department, I would appreciate a phone call to me. Just call the fire department, ask for the fire chief, you know, because I, I will investigate everything, I will follow up with you, and I will, I will.
You would have got a call, but I heard the chief. I talked to the chief, I talked to the person, and...
So, a few years ago, we had an issue with landlord on West Quincy here, and part of that was the landlord helped us rewrite our policy and procedure on our key box system. And in, in that procedure, it says if we're notified by dispatch that there is a trouble signal to any fire alarm, that we have to go out and investigate those. So, that's why they go out and investigate them. Now, for the part of not waiting or rescheduling and stuff like that, I need to check into that.
Like I said before, I asked who it was, and he said Tom Schultz. I never heard of the person. Now, if they said Presnahan and/or some of the other guys.
Right.
I've known for years. Go ahead.
Right.
But I didn't know the person.
Okay. So, I'll investigate it, I will get back to you, I'll get your information, we got it and stuff.
Right.
I'll get back to you early next week, but I, I will follow up with you, and we'll get to the bottom of it. And if we have it, have a situation we're having, and again, we're, we try to contact you. If we can't get a hold of you, then we need to check it out, the way the procedure is written, we go in and check it out, you know, so, because we have had fires from trouble signals before.
Then I'm just a couple minutes away.
So, you know, probably 99% of the time, we're going to hold you, and, you know, we can work that out. So, but I will follow up with you, I will do an investigation on my end, and we'll get to the bottom of it.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Dan. Though, a couple of different issues that you brought up, I'll, Chief will respond to it, and then will be copied on his response.
Very good.
Thank you. And again, Knox boxes put in for emergency purposes, so it's there for a reason, but they'll answer some of your concerns and questions. All right. Anybody else open forum that I missed? If not, I will close open forum, and we'll move on to reports. And first report is the mayor's, and this evening I have, it's an honor for me to recognize, and I'm going to ask Larry Forsberg and Angela if you could come up. We have an individual who has been very supportive of our village, our community, and we'd like to present him, a little proclamation in token of our appreciation, so.
You start at the podium first, Larry, and then we'll read it.
Start at the podium. Okay.
It is indeed an honor to read this. A proclamation honoring Stephen Lin. Whereas Stephen Lin has been the Director of the Administration Division for Tico, Chicago for the past six years, and whereas Stephen Lin has been a friend to Westmont for many years and has helped foster a strong relationship between Westmont and Tico, Chicago. And whereas the relationship between Westmont and Tico has yielded incredible cultural and educational experiences for the Westmont community, including participation in the taste of Westmont, annual cultural dance performance presentations, Chinese language opportunities, and much, much more. Whereas Stephen Lin and Tico have been supportive and encouraging our effort to create a Sister City program with Taiwan. And whereas the goal of the Sister City program includes striving for peace and prosperity by creating bonds between people from different cities from around the world. And whereas the goals of Taiwan-Westmont Sister City program include opportunities for cultural exchange, educational exchange, municipal exchange, economic development, and Stephen Lin has been supportive of Westmont and the Sister City program. And whereas Stephen Lin has dedicated his professional career to building friendships and strong relationships between Taiwan and the rest of the world. And whereas Stephen Lin will be leaving Chicago, his Chicago Post in July 2017 and returning to Taiwan for his next official assignment. And now, therefore, I, Ronald J. Gunther, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Westmont, along with the Westmont Village Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim that Stephen Lin will be honored for his friendship and support of the Village of Westmont, and that we present him with this key to the village to affirm that he will always be a welcome guest to the Village of Westmont. In witness thereof, I eventually set my hand and cause this seal of the village to be affixed to 26th day of June 2017. And at this point, I'd like to ask Mayor Ron Gunther and Village Clerk Janice Simmsky to please come forward for the formal presentation.
Something you can take back with, and hang up on. All right, thank you. And you get an opportunity, if you'd like to say a couple words?
Yes, no? Yes, no? Yes, no? Yeah.
We also have a gift basket.
We have a gift.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable Board Member of Westmont. This indeed a great honor to be here, to accept this, that, in fact, I have been diplomat for 20 years, and this is my first time. So, pretty honor. And a few years ago, our government decided to set up a cultural center, Tico Cultural Center in Chicago suburb, and I'm glad they made the right choice, made a brilliant choice to set out our cultural center in Westmont. Nice neighborhood, friendly people, and we are very happy about that. And I can assure you that in the future, that my office will try our best to promote the relationship between Taiwan and the people of Westmont. And also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, all of you, for your support and friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. We also put together a small gift basket, just as a token of our appreciation for all you've done and for Westmont. There's some items in there to remind you of Westmont when you're back home in Taiwan, some shirts from the Chamber from special events. So, again, thank you for everything you've done in support of Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. And if Angela would, and Larry wouldn't mind going back to the podium and maybe give us an update on our Sister City program, there's been a little bit of a, not a bump, but a change of plans.
Sure. Mayor and all the trustees and board members, the, since, ever since they canceled the trip because the governor's health issue, and we are now in the middle of a communication here in West Shu County to plan a virtual signing in August. So we are in the middle of a conversation and picking up the date. That will be super. Thank you.
And plans are still work, being worked on for the student exchange program for students from Taiwan to come here in November.
Yes.
And for us to send students to Taiwan during our spring break, so those plans are still underway also.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. The, I don't know if the, under my report, Chief, the two chiefs, did you want to maybe talk about the passing of Dawn? Just, all the chiefs, ex-chiefs. Maybe someone who wants to be chief.
Two of the three of us want to.
Okay, sure, throw the little guy out there. Thank you, Mayor Village Board. For those who don't know, we had a longtime, 15-year volunteer, Dawn King, who was the, the life of both the citizens' police and fire academies. She's been battling health issues for, what, as far as we've known her, for probably the last 10 years. She lost her battle this Monday afternoon at Good Samaritan Hospital. She will be missed, however, for those who knew Dawn and know Dawn, she gave us our instructions well before, and we always did what she said, so we know what to do, we know to do it right. And squad car night, she lived, and she lived for squad car night, and last Thursday was squad car night. And she was hospitalized late Wednesday afternoon, and Thursday morning, she called Greg Pankey, our EMA Coordinator, and he said he thought he was talking to Darth Vader because she was on oxygen, you hear the thing about. She called from her hospital bed to tell him what to do that night for squad car night, and he said yes. And then shortly after that, she took a turn for the worse. So she'll be sorely missed. We plan on sometime within the next month or so, we'll have a memorial service for both police and fire academies' alumnis. But we wish her well, she's with her family, and so we know she's happy, but thank you. She will be missed by not only us at the police and fire, but a lot of people in the village.
Community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
I have one last item, and just a reminder that on the 4th of July, at Taiwaner Park, we'll hold for the past 17 years, our annual 4th of July celebration. It is always on the 4th of July, so it's on Tuesday, the 4th. We'll have activities at 4:00 PM, entertainment, food, beverages, and the fireworks begin at 9:30. So for, if you want to, if you haven't seen it, it is the best fireworks show in DePage County, maybe the state, so please come out and enjoy it. So, that's all I have, and I'll ask Clerk Simmsky if she has any.
Well, first of all, I have to apologize to our manager, May, and to our attorneys, M. and X., and our finance director.
We're here.
I forgot to call them in roll call, but they are here. They're always here. You can depend on them. And secondly, I want to announce that the community garage sales will be August 4th, 5th, and 6th, that we have added a Sunday option for people, because a lot of people would like to feel to continue onto Sunday. And info will be out on the website soon. I have to give a shout out to our wonderful police and fire department. My brother-in-law was found by my son, passed out on the floor and unconscious, and you couldn't get him awake, and he's hearing impaired, and he panicked, and he didn't know what to do, so he tried to text me. I was out of town, and I didn't even have my phone on me, and then he texted my youngest daughter Gretchen, who said, "I'll be right there." So she came running over. They had to break into the house, but as soon as they got in, Dan said, "Dial 911 right now." Well, the police, fire, ambulances, you all are wonderful. You came. My daughter said, "What a wonderful group to work with." She said they were there, they got right to the task, they were kind to us and very helpful, and I can't say enough kind words. My family just thought you were wonderful, and I appreciate it more than you'll ever know. So, he is doing fine. They did rush him to the hospital, and he didn't come around for four days. Nobody can quite figure out what happened. It was just a very weird situation, so we don't know. There weren't drugs involved or anything like that, so it's just very confusing what happened to him. But I did wanted to shout that out to our wonderful departments. And then, I mean, condolences to all Dawn King's friends, and of course, we lost another great community person in George Strength, and condolences to his family and all of us that knew him, because we all love George. He worked for you, he was around for years, so it's a big loss. So, and that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to trustees, and I'll start with Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight. First one is that economic development, we will be meeting, but not on the first Wednesday, which would be July 5. That would be right after the fireworks show, and we thought people might be a little tired. Plus, we have a new downtown applicant that's going to be coming in, so we're going to move the meeting to 9:00 in the morning on the following Wednesday, which will be the 12th. And we'll meet right here in the room behind me, but I think you'll find that that will be a very informative meeting. This is something that has been talked about and worked on in our downtown area for some time, and it's extremely exciting. So, that's coming to fruition. I think people are going to be really happy and surprised when they hear it publicly. So, we are looking very forward to that. So please, July 12th, if you want to, 9:00 in the morning here, and you're, everyone is welcome. The other thing is we'd like to do is to welcome Urban Veterinary Associates, because she is now open. And again, if any of you get a chance to stop by, it's a very nice owner, nice establishment, glad to have them again in our downtown, and I think you're going to be very pleased with them as neighbors. They've joined the Chamber, and I think they're going to be active business owners in Westmont, so that's going to be good.
The first block north of the tracks?
First block north of the tracks. Urban Veterinary, and you'll like them, they're nice people. And then the last thing I have is to... And then the last thing I have is to give a congratulations to a company called Magnet Schultz. We met the owner last week because they were celebrating their 30th year here in Westmont. They are an international company, they're a large international company. He told us what the sales were, and I kind of forget, half a billion dollars?
I was just amazed at how much equipment, the cost of equipment.
Yeah, but they have been here for a long time. They are around the corner on Plaza Drive, not that far from Tai Warner. I had the great honor to meet Wolfgang 20 years ago when I was mayor. And I will tell you, he is just a wonderful person. It's a family-owned business, I think he's third generation. And I will tell you that they're a secret. They're like the people on the corner who get the importer of the year award a lot. They're here, they've been here for a long time, but we don't know a lot of, you know, they don't, there's not a lot of publicity. They're a tool and dice, tool and dice shop. They make a lot of different things. Some of them are extremely interesting. They make, was it four or five parts for Mercedes? And they're working now on a new device that, for hospitals and people who need to protect things like drugs, where there's a signal that goes, and there's a little switch behind the drawer, and it'll release the drawer, and it'll pop open without having that right signal you can get in. So, they're interesting people, and congratulations to them after 30 years. When I met them 20 years ago, I told the story about meeting Wolfgang, and it was the time of our 75th anniversary. And I was really talking to Wolfgang, saying what a great place this was, and he kind of stopped me in my tracks and said, "Well, I really don't want to bust your balloon." He says, "But the town I live in," he's in the Germany-Italy border in mountains. He says, "I have homes in my town that predate Christopher Columbus." So, but it's great to have them here. Larry Forsberg went, Steve, the mayor, myself. And I will tell you, to have them here, they're a growing company. I think they said they're looking for some more employees.
Yes, they are.
And to have them in Westmont, again, it's a cherished secret. So, anyhow, congratulations to them, and that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I want to tell everyone to be very safe on Fourth of July. Have a wonderful time, but remember, let's be really safe. And secondly, the next finance committee meeting will be July 6th here in Village Hall at 4:00. Everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be July 20th, and that's 4:30 here prior to our board meeting. And the guys have been out working hard, watering the flowers every day, looking great. The Environmental Improvement Commission, I don't have a report, but I believe we are now 100% delivered on our new garbage cans. And I think we have almost an 88% acceptance on that, right? So, everyone should have their new waste cans in adjusting to that. Again, just a reminder on that, that the waste management will take the old cans if you clearly mark them. And again, smaller totes will be available down the road if the residents that don't have the ones they want, if they could just be a little patient right now, and they'll have the smaller ones. And lastly, thank you to Spencer. Steve was gone this week, you did a great job with keeping us updated and responding to residents and everything. I thought you did a great job, so thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Move over to this side, we'll go with Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, nothing to report this evening.
You want to go to the fair?
The anniversary?
Trustee Little.
I gave my time to Jim.
All right, Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. One, just to let everyone know that a week ago, we had a record-breaking squad car night. We had over 60 squad cars, and we had over 225 other vehicles at our cruise night. So, it was a huge success, and everybody enjoyed the parade afterwards. It was really very, very special, loud, noisy, a lot of lights, and it was just a lot of fun for everyone. So, those that did not come out for cruise night actually came out just for the parade, and that was a very special time to see everybody. So, that was wonderful. Again, cruise night is again tonight, so come on out. Stop watching television and get out there, it's going to be a lot of fun. The Taste of Westmont is coming up the 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th of July. Westmont Special Events is looking for volunteers, and I will be hitting everybody up on the board for a little bit of time. And I'm going to challenge everybody in TV land to come out and join me for a couple of hours. If nothing else, give me two hours over that weekend. I could really use the help. I'm running the carnival, and we've got a lot of people in the beer tent that need assistance. So, that's a fun place to be during the Taste of Westmont. If you want, we're also looking for a maintenance staff that we're going to be hiring. So, if you contact either the Westmont office at 630-829-9378, or go online to WSEC@westmontsevents.com. Talk to Christina, and she'll set you up with the application and times to volunteer. So, again, let me know if you're interested in volunteering because we're going to need a lot of assistance. It's a big event and a lot of fun, so thank you.
Thank you. And just as a point of reference, and I think everybody understands that the special events, the cruising nights, the Taste, is all run by volunteers.
100% volunteer.
It's a community volunteer group that was created, and the Taste of Westmont dates back to the 75th celebration. So, it's been around a while, so thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I just want to remind everybody, the next Public Safety Committee meeting is July 6th at 4:30 PM, right here. And I'd also like to invite up the fire chief back to chat about the upcoming kids' safety camps, which are scheduled for June 20th, 21st, and then again in August.
Thank you, yeah. The police-fire-kids'-safety camp happened this week, the first camp. We had 28 children. The chief and I were there for graduation, great group. The instructors report that this was the best behaved group they've had in years. But a lot of exciting things have really changed the program up. They have canine dogs that come in. They have a representative from the train come in and talk about train safety and all types of new things they're doing to the program. So, the next class is getting pretty full, almost full. I think they're at 28 or 30 now for an August. And that'll be our last camp for the year. But the program's going strong. This year, probably three-quarters of the kids in the first class are first timers. Where in the past, we've had repeat kids that came back. So, that's a good sign that the program's working, and the parents are watching. And so, if you're still interested and wanting to get your kids in August safety camp, just come to the fire station, go on the website, pick up an application, return it to us, and we'll get them in the camp. So, thank you.
Chief, while you're there, Chief, and we talked a lot about squad car night. When is fire department?
Fire truck night is on Thursday, August 24th. And we will not have more vehicles than what the police did. I will tell you that right now because our vehicles are much bigger. But we will have a great turnout again, and it'll be a good night just like police squad night was. So, August 24th. Thank you.
Chief, I was very impressed with the camp this week when I saw so many bicycles outside of the fire station. In this day of everyone getting dropped off at the door, I was very impressed as I thought you guys were having a bicycle sale or something. There were so many. I was really taken back, and then it dawned on me.
Oh, the part of the class is bike safety. The police do a great job with that. At the same time, they register the bikes. So, if a bike gets lost, they'll be able to look it up and find out whose it is and that. All the kids get a free bike helmet. So, they go through a course while they're there, so it's pretty intense. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And then last, Mayor, I'd like to invite a few residents up. They're dubbed the Can Cure Crusaders Team, and it's a mix of Mike Graham and his family, a couple other businesses, Miss and Legends, the Hancock family. And I think we might have another representative here, maybe not. But they got a pretty exciting story that I think Westmont's going to be proud to hear that I'll let them tell a little bit about it. But it's pretty neat, and I asked them to come and share the success.
Good afternoon, my name's Mike Graham, most of you know me. Resident of Westmont for over 10 years. And my father passed away from cancer about four years ago, and it was a rare cancer. So, ever since then, I've been looking for the right group to follow. And I stumbled across the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and they focus on blood-borne cancer. But just because of the way that you can test on blood-borne cancer, they're responsible for 40% of all current cures and treatments for all cancers across the entire spectrum. So, if it's solid mass or blood-borne. So, I got involved with them about a year ago, and in January, they asked me if I would run a 10-week campaign fundraiser as a candidate for a group, it's called Man and Woman of the Year. And I did it. Started in March, ended June 11th. And along that period, I had a ton of support from friends, family, many people from Westmont, my family, my wife. Miss and Legends was, Miss and Legends Brewing was a tremendous supporter, donated to multiple different events. Tesla, that just moved into Westmont, donated to our silent auction a free weekend with the Model X, which I did not win. Liked to. So, the success was, I won. So, congratulations to everybody, including Westmont. But that's, to me, I never was actually in it to win. It was to raise as much awareness as possible and as many funds as I could. We had five different events that we ran, and then there was also obviously reaching out for direct donations. Members of the board contributed, thank you. So, my campaign, our campaign, raised $168,570. And then the last event that we had was a gala, it was downtown Chicago. There were about 500 people there. Our campaign had 20% of the people there, which was a very large group. And including 20 different residents from Westmont joined us. So, Westmont was a very large part of the campaign in putting our mark on the state of Illinois. So, thanks.
Congratulations. That's all I have, Mayor. Good one to end on, so. So, we'll move on to items removed from the consent agenda. Is there any board member that sees anything? If not, I'd ask Manager May to please read the consent agenda.
This evening, first on the consent agenda are Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held on June 8, 2017. Next is finance ordinance number four in the aggregate amount of $1,617,922.81. So, followed by purchase orders. First purchase order being the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $88,586. This represents the Economic Development Partnership for 2017-18. The next purchase order is also Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $42,000. That's for tourism grants, and that's actually $21,000 budgeted out of each fiscal year. So, this is called the first and second payments. Third purchase order is shallow construction. This is the purchase order for the construction contract. It's $40,999.99. Not to be confused with $41,000, I guess. And that's for Southfield Gardens Construction. The next purchase order, KSA Lighting and Controls, $28,564. It's for the pedestrian light replacement at the depot along the platform. Next purchase orders, DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference, $25,292.88. Represents our fiscal year 2018 conference dues. Brings the total of all purchase orders to $225,442.87. And that brings the total of purchase orders, together with finance ordinance number four, to $1,843,365.68. Next, on the consent agenda, our community events. The one community event this evening is for the Fourth of July celebration. Board to consider an ordinance permitting the following in regards to the 2017 Fourth of July celebration at Tai Warner Park. Four items. First item is amplified sound permit request. Second is Fourth of July traffic plan around Tai Warner Park, which would be the street closures. Three, a special event liquor license fee waiver. And four, the tent permit fee waiver. Next on the consent agenda are two proclamations. First one is for Susan Friend. Board to consider a proclamation to recognize Susan Friend retiring from C-Spar after 40 years of service to the community. And the last proclamation was, is related to the presentation earlier, to Stephen Lynn. It's board to consider a proclamation honoring Tico, Chicago's Stephen Lynn, and his role in the growing relationship between Tico and the Village of Westmont over the past seven years and supporting, in support with all the work with the Sister City Initiative. That concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second. On to question. Trustee Barry.
Steve, under C, item four, the KSA Lighting and Controls, was that one of the grant lighting?
We, it's parcel reimbursement with the LED lighting. So, we, part of the project, and the grant program you're talking about, and all the pedestrian lighting we did all and around the downtown, we put that in, and then we get reimbursed for, in some cases, they were 100%, some cases it was 80%. So, this is that, but this is our costs for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
I'll figure out what the total was between the two, and I'll let you know what the ratios were.
Didn't know if we had granted, we had a grant for the train station or not. I guess that was my question.
It'd be a good thing, the next Public Works Committee will just put a summary of everything that was covered under the grant.
And they look great.
Yeah, absolutely. Turned out well.
Any additional? Anybody in the audience has a question on that? Seeing then, I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. 201 South Washington Street, a setback variance. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning code variance request from Scott Jackaway to allow for the construction of a home addition and deck within the required side yard adjoining a street setback in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. And Director Ziegler, give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. This was recently approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission with a unanimous recommendation. They were very appreciative that the homeowner who's here with us tonight is going to build the architecture that matches the neighborhood and is in character. And they're going to have a front porch addressing the street. As you've probably seen, a lot of the brush and debris has been cleared out from the front of the property, and we think it's going to be a nice addition to the neighborhood. I'm available for any questions.
Do I have a motion?
So, move Guzzo.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second and to approve as presented. Questions? Comments? Anybody from the audience? Seeing then, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. B, 700 Oakmont, Ryan Companies and Laurel BMW. Board to consider ordinance approving a request from Ryan Companies and Laurel BMW to allow temporary parking in the Office Research District. And Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, BMW is undergoing a large expansion project with a new dealership, a new used dealership. And while they're undergoing construction, which is going to be starting shortly, they will need adequate parking. So, they're going to lease 400 spaces from the Ryan Companies on the south side of Oakmont Drive. In the meantime, the Ryan Companies will be coming forward with their proposal to renovate the office building to the north of Oakmont Drive. So, we'll be balancing all this with a month-to-month lease for BMW, and we'll continue to help them find parking in the areas they need it. I'm available for any questions.
Do they have any idea how long?
It's up for a year, correct? Approximately.
Jill, is the lot, is that the parking deck that I guess I would know next to Papado? Is that where they're going to rent?
No, this is where the big lake is on Oakmont and Tuscan Alley. It's on the south side of the street.
I apologize, I did not go by the location.
That's okay. It's a, it's a currently unused lot, so this will be good use of the property.
Jill, we typically put a hard cutoff date of when this temporary use will expire.
I would recommend a year.
A month?
Mm-hmm. And then we can reapproach the board if we need to amend that.
Well, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second to approve as presented. Any additional questions? I know a representative here just observing. Anybody from the audience that has a question? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, two hundred East Quincy Avenue, the Westmont Park District. Board to consider ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a park maintenance facility in the R5 General Residence District. And we've got Director Ziegler again.
Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed at the May tenth public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and given a positive recommendation. There was a lot of discussion about the current condition of the property, future expectations for maintenance, a landscaping plan to screen the property adjacent to the railroad corridor, which was provided to staff and included in your packet. And we had two members of the public who spoke about future development, noise concerns, and the effect on remaining properties. Also here tonight is Executive Director Bob Fleck from the Park District, and we're both available for any questions you might have.
You can come up now before and add comments. Now's a good time.
Hello, Village Board, thank you. I could, if desired, go into a formal presentation like I did last May for the Planning and Zoning Commission, if, if that is needed and warranted. I'm more than happy to do that. Otherwise, I am here to answer any questions that you may have. But as you know, we've been in a property on Burlington Avenue for thirty-two years, and it's been a wonderful relationship with the village. It's been one of those great working relationships where the benefit is only for the residents, but at this time, village needs the property back. So we need to find a new home. And we've looked around, we've evaluated all our properties. And, you know, taking away open space, usable open space for a maintenance facility probably would be very similar to the village abandoning water mains on a street and not putting them back. It goes against our mission and why we exist here for the community. So after a lot of investigation, we've come across this property on two hundred East Quincy. It fits us perfectly. Centrally located, we've answered a lot of questions. We have a letter of support from a neighbor that lives directly across the street from the property. And there's going to be a lot of cooperation with Public Works through Village Manager May in his support to help us improve the appearance of the property and make it usable. And to do this, it would be about a two-year period of time for us to make this happen. So it wasn't exactly something we were planning for, prepared for, but we're doing it. This is the direction we're going, and we're seeking your approval tonight as a permitted use in a residential district for this to be our future maintenance facility. Question?
If I may, and it's a special use. Not a permitted use, but.
Okay. A permitted special use, is that correct?
Very special use. Yes. There's two aspects to the landscaping. There's landscaping in, in the front yard and parkway area, and then there's landscaping in the rear along the railroad track. And I talked to Mr. Fleck about the phasing of that and try to put that into the ordinance. I want to make sure that the timing's correct. The front yard slash parkway landscaping, I, I think you're planning to do this summer. I put in a, a time period of September thirtieth, 2017, to have that installed. And then the rear landscaping, twenty, September thirtieth, 2020. Because I think we talked about you needing at least three years to get.
Correct.
Is that acceptable from your end and from the board's end?
You know, the comment on that was, because I had read some of the material that was given to us prior to this meeting. You know, Jill has worked so hard on the village plan and addressing that corridor, so that we have emphasized, everybody, and you would know this well too, Bob, that the train tracks there and the view from the tracks is very critical to us and what we're trying to develop there, and that it all is cohesive across the front there. And nobody likes it as is, but just know that the track side of it is as important to us as the street side. And I think in that regard, you guys might be the perfect tenant, because I don't think anybody gets landscaping more than you do. So I, I'm happy to see that you're going there.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, so again, we've, we've been on site, we've looked at the constraints, the possibilities, and, you know, we've shared the information for what we think is reasonable and with the timeframe that hopefully is agreeable to everyone.
There's two parts to your comment, too. There's the landscaping they're doing along their setback, and then there's, and, you know, in concert with these plans and what you were talking about in the actual railroad right-of-way.
That's right.
So they're not considering the railroad right-of-way work.
Right, right, I understand. Go ahead. Yeah, it's screening on our property at the property line. We will not be touching anything on the right-of-way.
Here's one other comment would be that village was working with the Park District. That took originally a seventy-five, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar fix down to where we can work together, and it's very manageable. So that's another sign of what, the working with the village and the park together.
Did you all see some of the plans that were submitted, the color renderings in your packets? Good, okay.
I had a question. I've been approached by a couple residents on Willmett that are very concerned about additional truck traffic or heavy vehicle traffic. They felt that the street itself already has a lot of traffic. And are you going to deflect any more traffic, or is it going to continue to increase heavy vehicle traffic on?
I think I might have received the same call earlier this week. I will tell you right now, our vehicles are up and down Burlington Avenue and Willmett Avenue every day, mainly because of our properties, our park sites, specifically Veterans Memorial Park. So we're already there. I don't think we're going to change or increase anything that's currently happening on that. Our vehicles are also small. The largest vehicle we have is a one-ton dump. It does not require a CDL license. Anybody with a regular driver's license can drive this vehicle. So we do not have five tons, we do not have semis. Again, very, very small equipment, and they're already on these streets.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. Additional questions or comments? I have to open up to the audience, anybody seeing none? I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
I'll see you all at the fourth.
Before you leave, I'll give you your liquor licenses.
The license, thank you.
And again, I want to thank you for stopping the other day on Cass Avenue and Lightning.
You're welcome. Always stop for you, Jenny. And if, one other thing, if anybody wants to volunteer, we're still looking for some volunteers at the Beer Tent, Fourth of July. Trustee Nero? I know you're on board. Trustee Addington, of course, you'll be there?
I'll be.
Yes. So we could still use some helping hands. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Moving on, new business D, increased available Class 23 liquor license. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Uncle Bubbs Barbecue, one thirty-two South Cass Avenue. I've got Deputy Liquor Commissioner Tom Mulhern.
Thank you, Mayor. Uncle Bubbs Barbecue is applied to receive a Class 23 liquor license, which allows them to apply for a video gaming license with the Illinois Gaming Board. Class 23 liquor licenses are capped, and currently there are no licenses available. There are really none that are issued. Uncle Bubbs wishes to provide a video gaming as an amenity to their customers. Their main business will continue to be that of a restaurant. A Class 23 liquor license is required before seeking a video gaming license from the Village Board. And to give the board and for everyone else who's interested, a Class 23 liquor license is an additional liquor license. An applicant must have a previous liquor license class and have been in business for three hundred and sixty-five days before they're eligible to apply for a Class 23 liquor license. Uncle Bubbs has been in business since nineteen, for nineteen years. They've had a Class II liquor license for that entire time, so they are eligible to come in and apply. Uncle Bubbs was, and I will say that in speaking with Mr. Link, when the village originally opted into video gaming, we approached all the businesses and then talked with Mark at that time. He made the comment that, right now, he didn't want to do it, but the, probably the day will come that he will, and that day is today. He has an expression, and I'll let Mark and Carrie explain everything to you, but they are eligible for such a license. The Village Board, this is a topic that approximately a year ago in September of 2016 created the Class 23 to get better control and to get a better handle of video gaming facilities in the village. However, they are also concerned, too, about existing businesses being able to opt in if they so choose. And not only is Uncle Bubbs, but there's other businesses out there, too, that we hear also, you know, may be interested in the future. So with that, I will introduce Mark and Carrie Link of Uncle Bubbs, who will tell you of their proposed ideas of how they wish to handle video gaming. Mayor?
And Tom, the, this is no different than when we opened the massage parlor or the tobacco license. We, they're capped, and then if we want to open it up, we can issue another one.
The only difference in this case is that they are the first applicants we've ever received for a Class 23 liquor license. So after that, as the mayor indicated, all licenses will be capped. If any future applicants wish to get a Class 23 liquor license, A, they have to be eligible, complete a review by myself, and then B, appear before the board and have the board decide either they wish to not increase the cap, or they could. And one additional thing, too, is I wrote in summaries for each of you, the mayor, as a liquor commissioner, has the ability not to issue a liquor license if he so chooses. The board could increase the cap, but the mayor has the, as a liquor commissioner, has the ultimate right to decide yea or nay after the board's decision as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Carrie Link.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, village officials, welcome. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us really quick. It's my lovely wife, Carrie. I'll make it short, I know it's been a long day.
How was your daughter?
Pardon? From inception to two decades later, the late Robert Sonoa and myself founded Uncle Bubbs back in nineteen ninety-seven. Bob, I had the recipes and the rubs, Bob had the finances for us. Great man, and miss him dearly. We became sole owners in two thousand and eight. We've had our liquor license for nineteen years. The restaurant currently seats a hundred and eighty guests. We do have a catering business, another revenue stream, where we do residential catering, corporate catering, and many weddings in the Chicagoland area. We also do many festivals in many different states. We average about fifteen a year. We're trying to slow down on that, because I'm not getting any younger. Uncle Bubbs Barbecue is a family-operated business with core values of sending out the bub love to those around us. We strive to provide a great dining experience for our customers, a safe and healthy workplace and fun place for our employees to provide, to provide, to provide support to those organizations seeking assistance through donations, fundraising, sponsorships, and volunteering throughout the community. Question why now? Increased competition fits in with our strategic business plan and customers have inquired. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, there were no other barbecue restaurants. In the last five years, there's well over twelve within a ten-mile radius. We, sorry, I forgot. The opening of several new restaurants has increased our awareness of how important it is to stay relevant to our customers and to the changing times. Our business plan for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and the future, something for all. So we really, we are going to add values for our seniors, we're going to add specials. For anyone over twenty-one, we're going to have new menu items. We're going to create new drinks, features, and video gaming. And we're going to name it the Royal Pig Pen if we're approved. So then we have, under twenty-one, we're redecorating our waiting area. We are going to have a couple extra games in there for the kids and added activities, amenities for the children. We also have the party pen is, and that's going to be our new marketing area for our Section D dining room for, for parties. And our goal is to offer an enjoyable dining experience to all guests at any age with added amenities. Adding amenities to, will help Uncle Bubbs Barbecue service our guests in the Westmont community along with the guests from surrounding communities. We have not seen much growth in the restaurant sales in the last few years. Making changes within the business is a way to stay competitive and relevant in today's saturated restaurant market. Why a Class 23 liquor license is in the best interest of the Westmont community and Uncle Bubbs Barbecue. Allowing Uncle Bubbs Barbecue to hold a Class 23 liquor license would give us that extra amenity for our guests to enjoy. Food is only part of the dining experience. Service and amenities are just as important in today's dining expectations. Help fulfill the revenue void Uncle Bubbs has been experiencing within restaurant sales. We are forecasting revenue to be in line or lower, middle range of the current licensee's revenue. We've also had some added expenses that we never saw. In, in a strategy in our new business direction, it would help keep Uncle Bubbs Barbecue competitive with our local competition and give us an amenity that restaurants in some communities cannot offer at this time. Attract customers hopefully to, to south of the tracks. Being the last commercial building in the downtown area, offering this amenity would attract guests to go south of the tracks. Many people don't like to travel south of the tracks because of the trains. It would provide additional revenue to the village of Westmont, the community, and Uncle Bubbs Barbecue. In conclusion, I know it's not how we planned, but I don't like to speak, I'm not going to lie to you. Uncle Bubbs Barbecue realizes we did not act on the offer to have video gaming in the machine, video gaming machines in two thousand and sixteen. At the time it was offered, we were strategizing the direction of the company. We do meet all the requirements of holding a Class 23 liquor license. We have come to a clear and exciting new direction, which allows us to keep our family-friendly core values with adding this amenity to our, for our customers and a revenue stream for Uncle Bubbs Barbecue in the village of Westmont. Thank you again for your time in this matter, and I truly appreciate your consideration.
Tom, you got your hand?
I do have to say, I have to apologize, Mark and Carrie. I suggested he do a PowerPoint, and then we had technical difficulties. So Vanna White there did an excellent job in the PowerPoint. I've been talking with Mark and Carrie over the past couple weeks. I've explained to them that in the past, the board has put a, a limit on the number of video gaming businesses in the village. However, this is a business, too, as we talked, the board has talked in the past, a little bit of history in the past, not only this Village Board, but the previous Village Board, talked about wanting to help existing businesses and being able to show them some support. The board originally voted, opted out of video gaming after requests from many businesses and residents. It was a way for them, the village, to help businesses. At that time, they were going through an economic struggle. If we all remember back in the, you know, in two thousand, I think it was ten or twelve, we were all, everybody was hit with an economic hardships, and the businesses were no different. And for those that were given the opportunity of video gaming, they're still here in town. It has helped them. Keeping in mind that this will be the first Class 23 liquor license, we do have another application that I know will be coming in. We had one business that was granted a liquor license in September of last year with the intent of hopefully coming back, waiting the three hundred and sixty-five days, coming in and getting a video gaming license. I also have heard, talking to another business town, expressing interest that this will be the same thing. And again, they're both longtime established businesses like Uncle Bubbs. You look at a, I gave the board a review earlier, you look at the geographic area. Uncle Bubbs, the closest video gaming business is the Uptown on Burlington Street. Next would be the Potbelly. The closest restaurants that have video game would be DJ Sports Bar and Walsh's Bar and Grill. And when you go south, it's not till you get to, you have Dottie's or the Viding Gaming Parlor, which is different. Closest restaurant south of the railroad tracks is Papa Pacero's Pizza. So geographically, it is spread out, as Mark mentioned, south of the railroad tracks. They are eligible, and I, there's nothing in my background that would prevent the board from issuing this license.
First one we're addressing, anybody want to add comments before we make a motion?
I do, sure.
Yes.
And just to maybe clarify or piggyback what Tom had said, is that, I don't think, at least personally, I'm not anti-gaming. I think they've been an asset for a lot of businesses, and I, they've been great for the village financially. I feel we did let it get a little out of control, a little oversaturated with the gamings, and I think we've reined that in. This is a perfect example of where we want to be, where we have known the business, that 365 days of having a liquor license, I think is one of the most important rules we've put in there, because we can see what kind of business we're dealing with. No minor violations, no fights, no things like that where we don't want to add more problems. And again, I just wanted to clarify at least my stance, that I'm not an anti-gaming trustee, it just needs to be the right fit, and personally, as we'll vote here, I think that this is a great fit. Mark has been a complete asset to this community and a mentor to me in business to see how to come in and do business. So I feel that this one is a really good fit, and I like the fact now that we have control of how we advance with it, so that, just a clarification.
Trustee, anything?
One other comment, and again, to follow up with what Harold has said. I've known Mark probably since they opened, but it was 13 years ago that this guy came in front of this village board and talked about starting a barbecue competition. And the amateur contest is still named after Uncle Bubs, he's the sponsor of that. But those first couple of years when we were getting started, we had turned, I think, about a $700 profit, maybe a $1,000 or $1,500 profit, and then a couple of grand. But if you take away those first three years, we've been averaging about anywhere from $9,000 to $12,000 a year from that event that goes to the Lions Club, that goes back into the community. And this is the guy that got it started. He's one of the heroes in this community, and, and one of the really good guys. So I reiterate what Harold has said, this is, this is what this is for, is to help him, and let's get it over and done with.
Tom?
I'd like to make a comment. I like the fact that we have the control over this as we do now, you know, and finally it seems to be working. And I do want to comment that, you know, your business is exactly where I envisioned this thing would be. It's a restaurant that might need a little bit more help financially, this will do that for you. It's just a family place, it's a kid-friendly place, you've got all kinds of staff there, you've got local employees there, all of those things, and it, I think that's, you know, an example of a very fine business. And then the only thing that I want to say, and Jill will make sure of this, the only issue that we've had, we have no problems, both chiefs could tell us, no problems with video gaming, so you could expect no problems. The only thing that we have is that people tend to get carried away with the signage and promoting the video gaming. You know, it's just promote your sandwiches and your business that way because it is a food restaurant, and my stomach will tell you, that's what it is to me, no matter how many slot machines are put in there. So, don't lose sight of that, is, you know, the video gaming is just an extra. But you run a great place there. Thank you.
Trustee Barker, and talking with Mark and Carrie, and with Jill, we currently allow an A, one A-frame sign and a window sign that could be for video gaming. We could hope you put the A-frame for business use rather than video gaming. Of use was Mark's electronic sign, and we talked with that, and, you know, we would not want to need Las Vegas. Even I was talking to Carrie the first time, she was, no, Las Vegas? I says, no, no Las Vegas type of advertising. And Mark even said that you were, I think, at one point, you know, that thinking of not having any video gaming up on the electronic sign. He's allowed to do so, but he also understands too, is that this is an amenity, not the main reason for being a business, and his signage would reflect that as well.
And I, I think that's been my, and I've heard from the board, and Jill too, the major concern is that we've got these A-frame signs, play poker here, or do this and that. And the attorney can add to this, but with the Class 23, we could stipulate signage along with that liquor license. So there is an opportunity for us to be more specific, tying it into the 23, what we don't want to see.
Right, and I'd recommend, for example, that Mark submit a sign plan, where the sign's going to go, what it's going to look like, have that be a condition of the liquor license, and also importantly, you're one of the few businesses with an electronic message board, so how is it going to appear, what are the characters going to be like, how often, makes it the American review?
You know, if I can just comment, I really don't want to put an A-frame out front. You know, I would rather not, especially being the first business as you come into Westmont. I think down the road, people eventually know, the customers will eventually know that it's there already. I see the numbers that all, some of these gaming venues are doing, and I'm not looking for that top dollar there at all. I'm not even expecting it, and I'm not here, I don't really want to promote it, especially being across the street from Holy Trinity. I respect Holy Trinity as well, and I, I don't think an A-frame would work, it's not what I even had planned. I would put it on the marquee if I was allowed, or on the sign if I was allowed to, but I wouldn't have, I would say maybe video gaming, I wouldn't have sevens going across, nothing like that at all. I really don't want to.
Keep in mind, as I put in one thing, the most video providers, or their equipment providers, will pay for the signage for the businesses. And that's why you'll see, as Mark mentioned, the sevens, most of those businesses that provide the free advertising to the businesses, use that seventh logo. So that is why it's so predominant, that's why you see it, because they all have the same vendor in this area.
I reminded several of them, because as a village, like you say, we don't care for it, but I try to remind a lot of the businesses that, you know, you had to have a liquor license to get this. It is a real windfall, it's a real blessing to get this, and I think that's what's disappointing some of us where it's been abused. I think a lot of us would love to have that opportunity to do that, and that's what we want to get our point across, I believe.
Any additional?
Just to bring up the somewhat thorny question in the future, unrelated to this applicant, but as Tom indicated, you will have some businesses in the future, possibly in the near future, coming in for a similar request. You have to consider those on a case-by-case basis. The liquor ordinance does provide a series of criteria that you can consider from parking, geographic distribution, history of the applicant, any violations, building layout design, et cetera. I implore you, if you consider a future applicant, much like you did here, much like Tom did, thoroughly vet them, and if you're inclined to reject someone, please state the reasons out loud, because these are matters that can get appealed to the State Liquor Commission. There's a hearing based on what was said here, what are the grounds for rejection? If there is rejection, the American write a letter with some of the information supporting the rejection, but I would appreciate your comments out loud at a meeting if.
Can you provide everybody with criteria?
Yes.
We'll make sure everybody has.
And one of my concerns and why I like the fit at Uncle Bubs is the size. You know, some of our smaller restaurants that may be looking in the future, I don't like where kids can't get away from it, where it's just jammed at you, whereas you talk about your separation and different areas where you could go sit and so forth. When it comes to restaurants, when they're so tight already, and then to try to jam those machines in there, that, I have an issue with, as you're saying, logistics, parking, all those things, but, but size is important to me where children and anti-gamblers and stuff aren't forced to, to be exposed to it. So moving forward, that is something that I would strongly consider.
Well, do I have a motion?
I would be honored to make the motion to approve this for Uncle Bubs.
Second, by Little.
Motion made, second. Additional comments? Question, anybody from the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. How soon do you think you, the state will?
Thank you very much. I, they said about six months.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, based on their backlog is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
They're a little short. I get it. Thank you, and just, just for the record, Jim Addington, way back in the day, actually came out and did competitions with us, so he got the feel of red, white, and barbecue, and you made it work, really, so I can't take the credit.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Before we move.
Yeah, you could have brought samples, she was. What the heck?
I've thought that would be a problem.
Before we move on, and I know that our attorney commented on future, but also the board to consider some other scenarios that might pop up. The sale of a business that has, actually has the right class in the gaming, when it's sold, the new owner, there's, nothing goes with it, so they have to reapply, and that one year then would, would hold up. So I just want to point that out because we may have some businesses through the year think that it's automatic, but it's not, so.
And are you okay with that? Because it can be viewed as an impediment to a sale where an existing restaurant tavern, et cetera, says, you know, I'm a bar, and I've got video gaming, and even though they have to apply, they know, okay, it's been a successful business, they're going to run it the same way, they're going to apply, they have to wait six months. Well, now they have to wait a year and six months because the liquor license that has a 365-day waiting period could be viewed as an impediment to the, to a sale.
So we could waive the one year?
You could grandfather in.
With the business?
Businesses in the event of a sale of certain percentage of assets.
John, if we didn't, if we didn't grandfather them in, legally, we can do that. You know, it puts us in, say, an awkward position, but if they don't disclose the fact to, you know, seller doesn't disclose the fact, they're the ones that would be liable for any issue, you know, they're deceiving the person that would buy the, you know, the business.
Certainly. Right, that's between them, I'm not worried about that part of it, I'm worried about, and it's not something I'm particularly worried about, but I would throw it out there, you know, for a, someone who's buying an existing business, they have to wait 365 days before they can even apply for the video gaming license, and it might be viewed as an impediment to a, to a sale, or it might affect the value, et cetera. I imagine you could hear in the future, if that were to occur, from a potentially upset business owner.
But, but then again, too, if they're coming into the village and they're buying a business, they're going to wait those 365 days anyway, because it would be a new business coming in, let alone a new owner, and I think personally, that if it's someone that is new to the village and buying, I think that we do need to wait those 365 days. We want to see first that they are going to follow what they need to follow, and I just don't like the idea of businesses just coming in for a gaming license. And I think the 365 days personally is a good fit, so.
I agree with Marie, because we don't know what we're getting on these potential new owners. It could be problem after problem. I, as I explained to Mark when he's here, I, I don't worry about hampering sales and taking away value. I had this discussion with an owner this week, is that, again, this is a blessing, this is a real windfall to you from the state. You know, the hardware store didn't have that opportunity, you know, the hardware store didn't get a chance to get gaming, you know, the coffee shop didn't. I told them to, you know, embrace what you've had, and there's still a value in that business that was there before we had gaming. So I think the 365 days is a key part to this. I think it's more important than the 500 feet, because that gives a board an ability to see what the business owners is all about. So I like that part of it, I don't know where everyone else is on it.
And again, I'm bringing it up because it potentially could come before us, so.
And it helps me give some direction too, because we do, well, staff does get phone calls from a lot of places that are interested, and if there is somebody coming in that wants to purchase a business, how it's going to be. When we began having public hearings, I know the mayor was there, I think from the park district part of it, there was one business that the video gaming will affect the sale of the price of his business. Well, keep in mind, as you just spoke about here, our liquor license and the video gaming is not transferable, so that's why we have our safeguards in place.
I want, I want businesses to come into Westmont because they want to be here. I don't want them to be walking in the door in economic development just because we're going to give them video gaming. I want them to be proud to be coming into our village, because they should be proud to have a business here.
I think it was the best thing, and Harold suggested that, one-year period, we get to know them and see what type of business they're running, and make sure it is a good fit, so. Okay, thank you, Tom. We'll move on. We'll move to E. Shared IT services with the Westmont Public Library. Board to consider ordinance to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Westmont Public Library for IT services. We've got Director Littlejubberg here. I said it right?
Yes.
All right.
So staff put this on as an intention for discussion only, and then to be voted on at the joint meeting next week with the library board. I am not here next week for that meeting, so wanted to make sure there was no questions tonight from the board. The, the agreement that was in the original packet, I handed out a adjusted agreement, there was two items missing, one was in Section 6 of the agreement, which was the out clause for the library for no cause, was not in the one that was in the packet. And then also in Item 9 under insurance, it required both people to name the other party, we just took that part out and changed it to both parties agree to carry cyber liability insurance. We did have a, I was at the meeting on Tuesday with the library board, and it was favorable at that board meeting, I have very little questions, and it should be good for next, next week. So any questions from the board, from your side?
None?
Cool. And then just for your general information, we are interviewing for the fourth position. We have two interviews scheduled for tomorrow morning, so, and it'd be attempt to hire positions.
I was just whispered into my ear that we need a motion to postpone this till next week. At the joint meeting.
June 29.
Motion to postpone to June 29th, Nero. Second, Addington.
Motion made, second to postpone, I have roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business F, engineering agreement, 2017, new public works facility. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with.
You skipped one.
ACOM. Oh, did I skip one? F. It's been waiting all night for this.
That's the old agenda, it was amended.
Someone did this to me, I read whatever they put in front of me. Where's Patty? F, lease agreement, 218 and 222 North Cass Avenue. Board to consider ordinance approving a lease agreement for parking spaces at 218 and 222 North Cass Avenue for the benefit of residents displaced by the alley reconstruction work. I got Director Ramsey is going to take this one.
Thank you, Mayor. As a result of the upcoming alley reconstruction, which just started this week, this apartment building at 227 North Cass will have no access onto the alley from their current parking spots for approximately about three-month period. That's the estimate we got from the contractor. We have been delayed a little bit starting this project, but within three months, they should be done with the project, and the apartment complex will have access to the, to the parking stalls. I know it was brought up to us before to look for other alternatives. One alternative is use Manning Lot. The problem with using Manning Lot is that during Taste of Westmont, that lot is pretty much full, and there would be no opportunity for that week of that, for the people in the apartment. So I looked at other options, and the best option that we, the staff came up with, was the apartment, or the parking stalls across the street at 218, 222. I talked to the owner of the property, went out there and met with him this week. He's worked with the village previously on different projects before, so he's, he's more than willing to help us out in this case. You can see the agreement is for $50 per month per parking stall, which totals to be $900 for the three months. I've talked to the apartment complex, they're thrilled, they're really worried about having access, you know, all the time to their, to their parking lot. Not only during Taste of Westmont, you'd have an issue, but during car shows sometimes on Thursday, you might have an issue getting it out with parking at this location, they can get to the alley, can still get out. So they were really thrilled to hear that this is an option. So I told them I would let them know what the board's decision is tonight, if that will be an option, and if it is, then they will start parking there probably this weekend. We are making temporary barricades with signs on them for those six stalls, so that people know that that's designated for those six people. And the only other issue is when Taste of Westmont is going on, where those six stalls are, that's usually where are, that's usually where we have the beer tent. I've worked, arranged with the owner to allow them, just for that, those three or four days, to park in the gravel part of, behind the building of their property, so. Any questions?
I think the biggest concern was crossing Cass Avenue.
The crossing and the money, and it just seems like there's just so much parking there all the time. I mean, I, I don't agree with doing this because it's full at the Taste of Westmont. We don't allow people to park on that gravel normally, but we're going to make an exception, which we normally don't do for businesses when there's not approved parking. And again, we're putting residents at risk crossing the, the street. We have a full lot just a door away. And then I've really been observing it since it came up. There's nobody on the street, ever. And, you know, why we couldn't get a special placard from the police department or something and let them park right in front of their place without spending, you know, we're already $900. Your time, Attorney's Emmane's time, I don't know how many hours he's got here, but, you know, we're, we get, it's just not the $900. But as usual, that's my opinion, so.
I think, you know, you're 100% right, except that every Thursday, we have to work something else out. And then during the week of the Taste, we have to work something else out.
And the other thing, as these alleys go, I, I would hope in the future, we would have this ironed out before the project starts. Because, you know, now we're into it, like, we, we got to come up with something. So hopefully, we look to, I forget what alleys next, F or G, or whichever one. But hopefully, we would look and see if that situation exists and, and come up with a plan that we're not forced to do, you know, and, and have a better direction on it.
And that is a really good point. This is the only apartment complex that only has access to the alley, unfortunately. All the other apartment complexes have, had another option. Oops, sorry. But in this case, this was the only one. So most, all the other businesses have access to Cass Avenue. So this is the only one that was going to be really hindered by not having access to the alley because they have no way to get in, no way to get out.
So what did we do with, like, Teresa's building last year, when, that apartment?
We let them go out to, go by the glass company in that alley. We let them have access to Cass that way for, like, deliveries. You're talking about, like, Westmont Flowers?
Well, the residents, you know, the apartments next to Allen J., there's apartment building, there are only access.
Correct. They, they were only two, two stops away, so we let them park. We talked to China Chef. We let them park right along China Chef there, and we let them park next to the automotive store there.
I see.
So that's what we did for them. We also had a dumpster there, too, so we had to work it out where the dumpster was not going to block any parking stalls last time, so.
First of all, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve lease agreement?
Second, Barker.
Motion made second. Additional comments? Questions? Anybody seeing none, then I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
No.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll move on to the engineering agreement. 2017 New Public Works Facility. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with AECOM Technical Services for the conceptual design report, preliminary design documents, and final construction documents of both 39 East Burlington Avenue and 328 South Womet Street. And we got Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The request is for, to approve the sum of $944,800 for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Design Engineering for the new Public Works Facility located at 39 East Burlington and 328 South Womet. The staff has recommended approval of this proposal for Phase 1 and Phase 2 Design Engineering for the new Public Works Facility. There's a lot of detail, which I'm just going to open up the questions to the board, but there's a lot of, I'm sure you have a lot of questions, but there is a lot of detail in the document that was attached to this, so I'm here to answer any questions about it.
And again, I know, Trustee Barry, one of the options could be, because there is a lot of questions, and we can get some of those out, is just table it and go back to committee.
Correct.
That may be one after.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
I think, only because of scheduling, that I, I was hoping that if we could call a special meeting, only because I'm not available next Public Works meeting, if, if it's tabled to the next Public Works meeting, I mean, not that I, that I'm, it's all hinging on me, but, so I would like to see a table. I think there's, there's so many questions. The funding, the, the funding, the, the location is still not, you know, I think 100% sold to all of us, and, and the funding becomes a key part of how that's going to go down the road. And it's a million dollars.
Yes.
You know, we're not talking $4,000. We're talking a million dollars if, if this doesn't become the location or something. We're, we're just out.
No, and I think it's really important that trustees all have a say in this. I mean, if you can't make it, I think it's more important, we, we pick a date that we can all attend. I mean, that's, there's a huge value there for that.
If we go ahead and we table it, is it, and we do either a special meeting or a Public Works, can we have one of the representatives who are putting this together be there?
Oh, definitely.
I think that would be great.
Oh, definitely. We, we can do whatever you want. I mean, that's not a problem at all. I can arrange anything you want for that. They've, they've actually approached me and asked me if, you know, do, do they want to come to abort me? I said, "Well, this is kind of preliminary. Let's wait until see, until you request it." And then they are more than happy to come out and give a presentation about it.
I want to see it done. I want to see it done right.
Okay, I agree with you. I am 100% behind you.
And one option might be, and it's a week away, but have a committee meeting prior to the library special meeting. If, I mean, start at 4:30. When's the library meeting? Six?
Six.
Six. You start at 4:30, you get an hour and a half to kind of just concentrate on that, and then Trustee Barry could be there, assuming everybody could come in on.
Sure, label me.
Networks.
As long as Trustee Barry brings us dinner, that'll.
Yeah, right. I'll bring Uncle Muff. And I think that, Manager May had mentioned, and I think we could do it for Mike or for Steve. If, if we got all of our questions and our concerns, if we gave them to Steve and Mike before that meeting, so they would be prepared. I know a lot of us want to see the EPA report and things like that. So if we get that to them and email just because of time tonight, otherwise, we'll, we'll beat up Mike and Steve tonight. And so if we, if we could email all that to them by that committee meeting and, and have all your concerns, then we, hopefully it would flow easy.
Yeah, I agree. And Trustee Barker also had a.
I mean, I want to comment, you know, and Harold's right on this. That's it? That's really. He's right on this here. Let's be clear. He's right on this. We had a conversation on the phone, and he's right on this. Because as soon as I read this and read the detail and printed it off and looked at the contract and all of that, I had some questions, and Mike answered them right away, which is perfect. And, you know, I believe everything that you told me, and I was very happy with that. But it did raise more questions. And so then it's like, okay, I want to follow up with those questions. And then, okay, so if I'm following up, and Harold's following up, following up, and everybody else is following up, there's so many questions. And because this is, you know, it's, it's a bond, it's a million dollars to start, it's $20 million proposed, possibly, it's a facility, it's a one-time shot, and as I told the mayor, I said, "We got to get it right."
Correct.
And so let's take the time that we need, and I'm all for a special meeting or whatever we got to do. I think it is important that we're all there and that we all hear it, and then when we leave there, we're in agreement as much as we can be and all on the same page. So we're all hearing everything. And, you know, I'm available next Thursday at 4:30, so.
That a good, sounds like it probably would work. Fit it right in there.
So, John, you want a motion to?
Postpone.
Postpone.
Well, no. That's Jenny's.
Postpone, or is it to?
You can't table it. If you put it on the table and ask it to come back.
I wasn't saying table it, but we're, we're deferring it to a special Public Works Committee meeting. So is that the same thing?
You can postpone it indefinitely. So just do a motion, do that, and then, and then once it's done with the committee, if it's ready, whenever it's ready to come back, we just add it to the agenda again.
So the motion just to postpone this tonight?
Okay, motion to postpone indefinitely is how you want it?
Yeah.
Second, Nero.
Any question on that? And of course, we'll fulfill the legal requirements of postponing the committee meeting next Thursday. Roll call, please.
4:30.
4:30, I think that's. Linda?
I have a ribbon cutting on my calendar at 5:00. I don't know if that's a placeholder or if that was really happening.
I didn't get.
Larry, do we have a ribbon cutting on the 29th?
Urban Veterinary, are they doing something on Thursday?
Yes, they are doing something. They're getting, throughout the season, they're doing some raffles of some of their services, so.
Is there a special ribbon cutting or any?
I'm not actually set yet, but they're looking to do the ribbon cutting on a Thursday evening when there's not a village board meeting, during the cruising night. So they do a continued set of open house tours and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, do I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Okay, the, it's been postponed. New Business G. Resolution for Improvement Motor Fuel Tax. Board to consider resolution approving Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for the Village's East Richmond Street Resurfacing and Water Main Installation Project. Looks like a war zone, but Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. We are, staff is requesting to appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the East Richmond Street Resurfacing and Water Main Installation Project. MFT from the municipalities allotment is going to help pay for the resurfacing part of this project. The water main part of the project is coming out of the water fund, but the resurfacing part of it will need to come out of the motor fuel tax. So we're asking if we can use that money to pay to resurface the road. If you've noticed, they are going really fast out there. The water main, probably next week they'll be done with the water main, at least getting it installed. They'll have the services and everything transferred over probably the week after the 4th, probably during the Taste, unfortunately. And then after that, we'll be waiting to start resurfacing the road. So it's going really, really quick. We've been blessed with weather.
You mean in the ground?
Yes.
Then you got a chloroacetate test.
They had a chloroacetate test, but at least the, the construction part of it, for us installing the water main, will be done by Monday, probably. I mean, they're really going fast.
Weather's been good, they've been moving. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Barker. Second, Addington.
Motion made second. And the question, Trustee Addington.
If it's going to be done that quick, maybe this becomes a moot point, but I was going to suggest that possibly with the way that they, they're pushing out into the street with some of the stone piles and everything else, I'm wondering if that shouldn't be one-way for a short period of time. Two cars going right there, right by Holy Trinity, it's, you're, you're close to each other to make it pass.
It, it is tight, and the road is closed heading, going east currently right now. The road is closed. When they're doing construction, it's only open going westbound. You know, so that's the way, so it is one, one-way right now.
It is one-way now. Was it the other night when we had our board meeting for the Lions Club?
It's not signed one day, one-way, but the one direction is road closed, and that's a.
Right.
Good.
You know, it's like, get your own risk type thing.
Right.
Any additional questions or comments? Goodness, is the oldest water main in town, right?
Is the last water main. It's 1930 or older.
Wow, one that breaks a half a dozen times every year.
Yes, and hopefully, when we get done with this one, we'll be good for a while.
What's going, what is that, an eight-inch pipe?
It's six-inch in the first block up to Womet, and it's four-inch from Womet to Oak, and then it goes back to six-inch from Oak to Richmond. But that's already been, Womet to Richmond was replaced last year.
The new water main.
The new one will be eight. Yep, all eight-inch.
All eight, all the way.
Yep, all eight-inch.
Roll call.
And it's looped.
Oh, yeah, it's all tied in. Yep.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. New Business H. This is another item we've discussed in committee, but stormwater bonds. Board to consider ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, the alternate revenue source, Series 2017, in one or more series of the Village of Westmont to Page County, Illinois, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7 million for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital projects within the village and paying for costs related thereto. And Finance Director Parker will kick this off.
So as the boards aware, we've discussed the number of stormwater projects we needed to do at the budget time. We've also had a discussion at Finance Committee meeting about issuing of these bonds for the benefit of the public. I want to also comment that this really had its genesis. We had a citizen stormwater committee that was formed a number of years ago, who identified some of the high priority issues in town for stormwater. And then in conjunction with that committee and the board discussion, identified the idea of using, creating a referendum, using a referendum to get a non-home rule sales tax, with the idea that we would be able to use that sales tax to finance these stormwater projects. We've had the sales tax for a short period of time, enough that we've been able to use some of the ongoing money to do some of the, start some of the designs for some of these projects, get a good handle on what our next steps are, and also get enough of a history that potential bondholders can say, "Yes, you'll be able to generate this amount of money that you need." At this point, the next step is to issue bonds so we can do some of these projects right away. The bonds we're looking at doing in the projects we're planning to get done over the next couple of years total about $6.5 to $7 million. And so we're looking to issue bonds in that amount. If we do this, then our debt service payment would be approximately $500,000 a year. The stormwater bond that we have, the stormwater revenue that we have coming in is about 1.4 million. So even with this, we'd still have another $900,000 each year that can go towards operating costs as well as specific projects. And then if, you know, once we get these first set of projects done, if there's another, maybe a little bit smaller set of projects that still need to be done with bonds, we've got a little bit of money we can use towards that if we need to. So this ordinance today is the first step. It does a couple of things. First of all, it lets everybody know that we're looking at issuing these bonds. And then, secondly, it sets the general parameters for it. And then the next steps are, we've got to have a public hearing about it, and then finally adopt a parameters resolution to allow us to go forward with the bond. So I've got Tom Chapman here from Raymond James, who I think was here at the Finance Committee, we can met him at that point, he's our underwriter helping us with this issue, and he's available for any questions if there are any.
He also helped us with the first bond issue of $10 million.
Yep.
You sat there, now you get to talk.
First bond issue for this particular tax, correct? Correct. Some of the best meetings I've been at are meetings that I haven't had to talk, and Spencer's done such a good job, so I'd be glad to answer any questions. But it's very similar to the 2013 bonds that you issued, that used a basket of taxes to make the payments, with your telecommunication tax, utility taxes, and your places reading tax. We did about $10, we did $10 million in bonds in 2013, utilizing the same mechanism, and what we're doing here tonight is the first step of an approval to, to look at issuing bonds to leverage the new stormwater sales tax that was passed back in April 15.
And because that's passed, it's a good revenue stream to attach the debt to, and so someone buying this is going to know it's going to be repaid, plus all of their revenues still would be back on the village if it failed.
That's correct, and, and what Spencer indicated, that the debt service is only going to be around $500,000 a year, the fact that you're collecting a million for gives you plenty of coverage there to give a bondholder comfort level.
And I think the comfort level also is that $7 million we can do in three years. So we all want to take more than we cannot accomplish. And just out of curiosity, if the bond sale were now, today, this month, what would we be looking at as far as interest rate?
Probably around the area average on a 20-year bond issue, three and a half to three and three-quarter interest rate. Rates have been low and favorable to borrow. As we discussed in finance, unfortunately, the state of Illinois puts a little nick into the interest rate that municipalities issue here, only because you're in the state of Illinois compared to like credits in other states. And hopefully, we'll get past this budget issue, maybe not so much for a solution, but at least Illinois gets out of the paper for a while. The fact that we've had so much headline risk or headline press does impact bonds that are issued in the marketplace, but we're still in a very favorable, low interest rate market, even though the feds raised rates here a couple of weeks ago. That was already built into the marketplace, we anticipate another increase in December. If the timetable meets that we planned out and discussed with finance, we should have these bonds sold and closed by the end of August.
So we can begin doing some planning for project, right?
One other item I did want to mention, one piece that's included in this is what's called the reimbursement resolution, where you're basically saying, if you have already done things, or we've already started projects, like some of our alley projects that have the stormwater component to it, that we're allowed to reimburse ourselves for that once we get the bond. So we're still trying to get the bonds done quickly before we start too many projects, but at the same time, we don't want to have to hold up on starting projects because the bonds aren't issued yet, so.
And we have three or four projects that are being engineered right now, right?
I think that's what it is, we've got three or four.
Several.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Quite a few that are going right now.
I mean, they're being engineered in anticipation of this, and they're some of the bigger ones that we know we had to work on.
Yeah, currently, obviously, we have the North Warwick project going on currently. We also have the alley project that's starting this week. We also have 6101 South Cass, the fire station, the detention basin right there, that's being worked on currently right now. We also have Grand Richmond, the LeBeck Park area, that's being worked on right now. We've also, preliminary plans for a couple other projects, smaller projects, one in Oakwood and one on Burlington, that we're looking into. So, yeah, we have plenty of projects to, to use this money up really quickly, which is great.
Other North Warwick, the big one, the 400 block?
Yes, and then we also have, in front of Manning School, we're also looking into doing something with that detention area there too. So we do have plenty of projects in the fire right now, and so.
And again, just comments that you pick up talking to people sometimes, that have said that they have seen, since the rotting or cleaning out of some of the storm sewers has taken place in parts of town, they've seen less standing water. So apparently that's, again, I don't know what that total, I don't remember what that total cost was for that, but it's doing its job. So I think that's a real positive.
Do I have a motion to pass the ordinance?
Sumo Guzzo?
Second, Addington.
Made in second. Additional comments? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. We'll look forward to seeing you again, Tom.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll put you earlier on the agenda next time.
Final new business is the Client First Agreements ERP System. Board to consider ordinance approving the following agreements with Client First, ERP Contract Negotiation Assistance, and B, ERP Project Implementation Services. Manager, I don't see Glenn, is there?
I can speak to that. So Glenn and I have been working together a lot in working with the selection of and implementation of the ERP system. I think as we've reported to you previously, we, staff has selected an ERP vendor and are looking to move forward with them. There's a couple of pieces to that. One of the pieces of that is, we've heard that, you know, in working with these vendors, it's really good to have somebody that knows the ins and outs of the contracts and can review them. And so Client First is, got a good reputation of being able to help the municipality make sure everything that should be in the agreement with the ERP vendor is. This ERP contract is for $500,000, and so for that, we want to make sure that we are actually getting everything that we need to get and not getting extra things that we don't need to get. And that's a big piece of what this company can do for us. The other piece of it, the ERP system had a line item that we could choose to do if we wanted to, for about $280,000. That was a lot of project management, having one of their people help manage our side of the project as well. We looked at that, it was pretty robust, but we really didn't want to spend the $288,000, so we looked to see what other communities had done and what other options were out there in the marketplace, and found that Client First also does this sort of thing, where they will kind of manage the project, track what's going on for all the different pieces of it, and where everybody sits. As you know, staff here is already pretty busy with just the ongoing day-to-day implementation, so having these people that can track it, that have experience tracking the project management, can help with the implementation, can give some ideas and suggestions and best practices, would be really beneficial to us, but we think, you know, spending this on a neutral third party, as opposed to the developer whose incentive is, of course, to say, "Hey, we developed the software, we'd like you to pay us more money for this, you need this piece too." We'd rather have somebody who doesn't have that incentive. So we think it's important to go with a neutral third party, and we think that Client First is going to be the best option, based on the feedback we've received from other communities that have used them.
And I do have to say, you guys did a lot of research and had them in, so recommend taking your recommendation. So, do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made second. On the question, this is one of those audit, financial things that will help, I'll ask Spencer.
ERP.
This will update the financial in with the audit, that this, we're behind in the software program we have now, this will bring us to where we need to be?
Yep.
Very good. Seeing no additional questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes miscellaneous. Is there, we forget anything? Trustee Barker?
Just a comment, if we go ahead with this meeting on Thursday, this committee meeting, if staff could do whatever they can to get us the reading material beforehand?
Yes.
Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, more on Tuesday, less on Wednesday, hopefully.
And in the same token, we give them?
You know, just make the meeting quicker, and more productive, if we've all been through the material.